Members, I resume the meeting. This session is on Constitutional and Mainland Affairs. May I first of all invite the Secretary for Constitutional and Mainland Affairs at his team. Can I ask the Secretary to make some brief remarks, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wish to brief members on the main points of the estimates of expenditure of the Constitutional Mainland Affairs Bureau CMAB in 2018 to 19. In 2018 to 19, CMAB has allocated $676.1 million, which is $20.6 million, about 3% lower than the revised estimates for 2017 to 18. The financial provisions may be used in the following areas. One, electoral arrangements. The government will continue to work closely with the Electoral Affairs Commission, EAC, to ensure that each public election will be conducted in a fair, open, and in honest manner in strict accordance with the Basic Law and the relevant legislation. And we will also increase the penalty for making false statements in voter registration, improve the objection mechanism in relation to voter registration, and so on. Now, for the 2019 District Council ordinary election, the Electoral Affairs Commission will have to submit a report and recommendations to the Chief Executive by the 21st of November, 2018, for the 2019 DC ordinary election. 2018 voter registration, the campaign has commenced on the 15th of January. The statutory deadline for change of registration particulars and new registration is the 2nd of April 2018 and the 2nd of May 2018 respectively. Starting from the 1st of February this year, electors may apply for change of address by providing address proof. Promotion of the Basic Law, in 2018 to 19, we were set aside about $17 million to promote public understanding of one country into systems through organizing or sponsoring different types of promotion activities. The third type aspect of expenses, rights of the individual. In 2018 to 19, we will give submissions to the equal opportunities of Commission and the Office of the Privacy Commissioner for personal data. For the EOC, the submission is $108.5 million in 2018 to 19. For the PCDC, the allocation for the year is $75.47 million. At the council panel on Constitution Affairs Meeting on the 20th of March 2017, we consulted the panel on the nine prioritized recommendations proposed by the EOC on its discrimination law review. We are also following up on measures in relation to eliminate discrimination on the ground of sexual minorities. We also going to launch the new Rainbow Crossroad TV program and so on. And we are going to provide counseling and other services to reference parties. We're going to increase sensitivity training for teachers and so on. The fourth aspect of our expenditure is on mainland affairs and cooperation with Taiwan. In this year, the financial provision for the mainland Taiwan offices is $315 million. The country will soon propagate the development plan for the Guangdong-Hongkong-Macau Bay Area. The two governments reached a consensus last year on the development of the Bay Area. The focus is on developing the Bay Area into an international technological innovation center, commercializing technological achievements, and enhancing through policy innovation the connectivity of Bay Area cities and fostering the convenient flow of people, goods, capital, and information. After the publication of the development plan, we will set up the Guangdong-Hongkong-Macau Bay Area Development Office as soon as possible, where the office will be responsible for coordinating with the National Development and Reform Commission, reference central ministries, departments, as well as relevant stakeholders and professional bodies, businesses, and so on. Chief Executive chairs the steering committee on taking forward Bay Area development and mainland cooperation to coordinate various policy bureau departments to actively implement the initiatives in the 13-5 plan under the one country to systems principle. On cooperation with Guangdong Province, the focus is on promoting, is taking forward the Hong Kong-Shenzhen Innovation and Technology Park, the Lok Ma Chao Lu Innovation and Technology Shanghai Development, and so on. We have signed a various cooperation framework to promote cross-boundary helicopter services, cross-boundary infrastructure, and so on. And also, we cooperate with the Pearl River Delta Region, Shanghai Municipality, Beijing Municipality, Fujian, Sichuan. Since August last year, the Hong Kong and Macau Affairs Office of the State Council has announced two batches of policy measures to facilitate Hong Kong residents studying, working, and living in the mainland, covering employment and other aspects. In future, we will strive for further policies to facilitate Hong Kong residents on the mainland. On cooperation between Hong Kong and Taiwan, we will continue to promote exchanges and cooperation through the existing Hong Kong-Taiwan Economic and Cultural Cooperation and Promotion Council and the counterparts. We will also foster closer ties with key economic, cultural, academic, and media organizations to promote Hong Kong through various activities. That's by way of a brief introduction. We are happy to answer questions from members. We also have the relevant heads of the mainland and Taiwan offices. Mr. Charles Mox, please, for a minute. In CMAB 108 and 122, I and Mr. Ray Chen ask about the loss of the computer by the Registration Electoral Office, REO, and it's not just about hardware, but more importantly, it's the loss of personal data. Mr. Ray Chen asked whether you are going to put in more manpower and strengthen the system. In reply to my question, Part Six, you mentioned that you have a 20-year, one non-directorate permanent post and principal electoral offices and so on. But then you did not say whether there's need to improve the system, whether you have provision for that. That's the first question. And in my question, 122, Part Three, you said that the REO has prohibited all staff from using the Electors Information Inquiry System at venues. So this system is on one of the computers that was lost. So can I just confirm this? Is it a case that anyone could go online to check whether he is a voter? So in that system, there will be information on ID card, name, address, and so on, right? And that's not the same system, right? So for staff at the venue, if necessary, they could still check online through the online query system, right? Because this is just another system containing all information of electors. So can I just get it right? So you could still check online at venue for voters' information, right, since it's open to the public? Mr. Wong?
Yes, Mr. Mark is correct. For the Electors Information Inquiry System here, it's not the same as the other online inquiry system. Now, we say we're no longer going to use the Electors Information Inquiry System on-site. If necessary, staff could call our hotline, and then they could still check whether a person is an elector. So the other system is the Online Voter Information Inquiry System. In that case, why can't they, maybe, of course, you can make calls, but why won't they just access the Online Voter Information Inquiry System? Or perhaps, is it quicker to use the call? And do you have any provision to update the whole system and strengthen security? But of course, maybe, there's nothing wrong with the security of the system. It's a matter of people following their guidelines. But would you consider doing any assessment? Or would there be a need to update the system and strengthen the features?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we said we would ban the use of the system. In the long run, what are we going to do? Now, when it comes to the use of voters' personal data and work efficiency, we need to strike a balance. Of course, we are inclined towards protecting voters' information. So going by that principle, we decide not to use the system. If there are other ways we could adopt, we will try to do so to achieve the same objective. I don't think she got my question. I'm asking whether you need to set aside some funds to render the system more secure. Perhaps in my follow-up questions, I can ask for more details. It seems that you're not answering my question, actually. Secretary? Yes, on Mr. Charles Mox's questions. Now, after every election, in terms of the operational arrangement, the systems, the hardware, and so on, we will do a review. And if there's a need to update or upgrade the systems, or we will seek necessary sources through established channels. For example, we're going to seek your support to create a D1 post so we could take forward our work in a more efficient manner. CMAB 023. Program area three, $2.9, $296 million and $293 million, what's the difference? What about the provision for mainland and Taiwan? Will they be the same, or would it be based on the circumstances? Who would answer the question, please? Oh, you mean one is the, in the reply. For the 2017 to 18 revised expenditure, and then the other one is revised estimate expenditure for 2017 to 18, and estimated expenditure for 2018 to 19, $290 and $260 million respectively. It's for the mainland and the Taiwan offices, why is it a smaller sum? Because in 2017-18, we had a series of activities in celebration of the 20th anniversary of the establishment of the Hong Kong State Assembly. And those activities will include promotion of investment, so on. So is it the same sum for the mainland and Taiwan offices, or is there a separate budget for the two types of offices? Well, that is the total. And of course, it should be allocated to the different offices. Next, CMAB 007, two questions. Now, there is now the Guangdong ETO. In future, there will be the Bay Area Development Office. What is the division of work between the two? Because they still, both are to deal with Guangdong affairs, right? For the Guangdong office now, it will continue with its functions. For Bay Area Development Office, that's not, that's not the only functions for the Guangdong office. We need to communicate with the Macau governments or other governments. If there is any project that requires cooperation on different fronts, then it goes beyond the portfolio of the Guangdong ETO. So we may need to set up special units for high-level cooperation, collaboration. But then the Belt and Road also has an office. So then you have the Belt and Road office, and then there are other offices. So how do they share the work? Well, I think you're talking about several things. One, Guangdong ETO. The Guangdong office already has the function to promote Hong Kong and help Hong Kong businessmen in their business development, liaison with the provincial government. Also, we help Hong Kong people who work, live, or study on the mainland. So they need to continue with these functions. And in fact, they need to do more. And the other aspect is the Bay Area Development Plan. Now, once the plan is propagated, we need to implement the details of the plan. So it involves coordination and communication with the Guangdong Provincial Government and many bureaus, many ministries and departments. And so we need a dedicated office for that. Now, the Belt and Road Initiative is a national strategy. Hong Kong is involved in it because it's Hong Kong signed a document. And then there is the Belt and Road Office in charge of taking forward such work. So there won't be duplication, then, of efforts. What about the offices will maybe be put under one roof, or will they be separate? Well, they are separate offices. The Belt and Road Office is under the Commercial and Economic Development Bureau. For the Bay Area Development Office is under the Constitutional and Mainland Affairs Bureau. The two offices have different focus. Of course, the Bay Area is one of the important area under the Belt and Road Initiative, of course. Ms. Alice Mack, three questions. If you can't answer me, please give me a reply in writing. CMAB 073. We welcome the government taking on board the FTU's suggestion to set up a committee to deal with ethnic minorities. Now, you say you have to listen to views, but do you have a timetable as to when you will spend $500 million to help EM, the ethnic minorities? Next question, CMAB 074. In reply to my question, the government still says that it will just review the guidelines periodically. That's the administrative guidelines on promotion of racial equality. But do you have any plans to do a review in the coming year on the guidelines? And can you make sure that all departments will implement the guidelines? And then next, CMAB 096, which is about the Bay Area. Now, in the Secretary's reply, said that there will be a Bay Area Development Office. So how detailed will be the work of this office? The FTU has proposed a Bay Area policy, like improving the protection for people working, Hong Kong people working on the mainland, their healthcare protection, and so on. And also, how do we promote connectivity and so on? So how can this office perform these tasks? Thank you. There are three questions. First, about support to ethnic minorities. There is a steering committee. And it's about strengthening coordination across bureau and departments. Actually, we do have the reference policies in place, and there's also the funding to take forward many initiatives. But how do we enhance cross-bureau coordination and interdepartmental coordination? And what more could we do? So the steering committee chaired by the Chief Secretary hopefully would then handle the interdepartmental coordination better. Now, there's $500 million set aside. It's for the reference policy bureau departments to implement initiatives. Actually, we don't have a concrete plan yet as to how we're going to spend the money. First step is for the steering committee to see how it could enhance, how support could be enhanced. And then we have to consider whether we're going to do it through NGOs and how. So we need to listen to more views, understand the Commission of Poverty or the reference to the committee of the LECO are looking into these issues. So perhaps that's a more effective way to make good use of the $500 million. The second question on the administrative guidelines, we're going to review that. On enhancing support for ethnic minorities and racial equality, well, we'll look at them together. The third, the Bay Area Office, Development Office, it will work with stakeholders, including business associations and professional bodies. It will liaise closely with them because we need to know how we can help them develop. And secondly, departments will need to enhance coordination. Thirdly, we need to work with the central ministries, the Guangdong Provincial Government, the Macau Government, government, and so on, if there are any new initiatives. Next, Mr. Peter Shiu, Shiu Khatron, rather, sorry. It's also on the administrative guidelines on promotion of racial equality. The bureau says it will publicize it, it will also do monitoring and so on, and there will be $500 million. Now, there are different departments under your monitoring and guidance. Would that include the Correctional Services Department? There are 8,200 inmates. About 1,000, over 1,000 of them are for foreign nationalities. Most are more Vietnamese, but then there are also Pakistani, Tanzanians, Filipinos, Indonesians serving time in prisons in Hong Kong. Yesterday, there was a foreign national who committed suicide and is passed away. Of course, there is need for investigation. But for foreign nationals in incarceration, do they have, say, interpretation service? Can they communicate? Is communication with them to help relieve their stress and so on? So I want to know how the Correctional Services Department looks after foreign inmates? And for the $500 million to give additional support to EMs, how much will be used for supporting EM inmates? Another question. Now, I asked about government hospitals, departments, integrated family services centers, the social security field units of SWD, and so on. Now, they provide a telephone and onsite interpretation service. I asked for figures, but the bureau said there are no such figures. I think this is outrageous. Is it a case that you've never kept such records, or is there something you can't really tell us? Now, if there are no such statistics in the past, from now on, would you keep such figures and records? Because these figures will help us review whether the government departments have enough staff and provide enough service to EMs. So these statistics essential, so please do keep them.
As for the first question, administrative guidelines promoting racial equality, they cover ethnic minorities of the special needs as well as major government services and the coverage. And from 14 policy bureaus has been extended to 23 bureaus and departments. For this, 23 public body bureaus and departments included the Correctional Services Department. And for the second question, in supporting ethnic minorities, that interpretation and translation for the service users. In the reply, we stated that how the service provided. And in the past, we have stepped up this kind of services. Also agree that to effectively review whether it was sufficient and gauge the service demand. And so it's important that we need to have the relevant data. So we shall think about this direction, that how can we get hold of the relevant figures so as to able to evaluate the service demand and the provision and the efficiency? Chairman, let's say I can see that I could take that the bureau would detect to conduct such a collection of data, that to help us to evaluate the services, there will need such kind of figures. So we can't able to have it for a time being, social work towards this direction, that how we can collect them? Ms. Claudia Mo.
So after listening to the speech with the secretary, I'm quite disappointed. They claimed that the discrimination law review, they have the nine priorities. So the government will simply take to do what's convenient first. With the DLR, what the biggest loophole is that the administration and the government departments and bureaus below them, in terms of the, in terms of reference, is not included. So the 076 and 077, let's take along the prosecution numbers. When you take a conviction number is zero, you can claim that Hong Kong is free of racial discrimination, that with no conviction. That because the biggest complaint object is the government. So I want to ask for the question, CMAB 076. On the rights of ethnic minorities, as you know, that we divide into education, medical health care, employment, and so on. Since you have a steering committee, I was a little afraid of this kind of monikers. Can you turn it into a single ethnic affairs commissioner? Instead of having a duplicated structure, for example, one devote on special education working group, another on housing working group, and then on the meetings, we have a lot of meetings. I've been chasing you. Well, for the half hundred million EU mark in the budget, which is staggering, so unhappy for the government for this funding, how would you spend to use it? So maybe you should spend all the money on meetings. When will this 500 million put to work? Do you have any framework or timetable?
Secretary? You claimed there will be all new support mode. I wonder how new that is, as in exploring new forms of support, rather. Explore. And on the discrimination law review, you don't need to answer. That's not a question, it's just my complaint. And we have consulted the committee, we have nine priority areas. Chairman, I've only been got five for me. I stated it's not a question. Just answering my last question, what are the sort of new service mode that could be provided, and when can we commence? And what sort of a framework in place? For the second part. Well, firstly, well, different policy bureaus and departments have initiatives to support EMs and also relevant policies, initiatives in place. So the steering committee's function is to play the role of coordination role for the interdepartmental level. So that's necessary because some work would have been rationalized. So these meetings are inevitable. As for having a commissioner to deal with this, when it comes to implementation and coordination, it would help to certain extent. However, you can't, you need a committee level to execute on program plan. For the 500 million EU marked, that's to send a clear message that the government has this responsibility, so whatever initiatives require funding to be given. And how this 5 million, 100 million will be spent? For the first step, we want to review the existing services in education, employment, training, and community support, that what the state of the existing services, what area need be strengthened, and on the, what the effective mode of service delivery. So we need to deal with this first. Not only done internally in administration, we also need to work with the different organizations. So how new is this? So we said we're exploring new mode of service provision instead of going back to the old. Can you talk about how new could this be? Well, the chairman actually is supporting me. So the government is not, like, not used to doing something new, but the steering committee to explore how to strengthen the support for the EMs, including forcing a new service provision mode as a fully utilize society wisdom and network. So you make sure that you have to do something new before putting them down. It's a good one. Chairman, I hope to the government can have new measures to eliminate sexual discrimination, looking for 15 to 16, 17. I don't see anything new in the responses. I don't see anything going forward. Okay, I just could bring up the positive stuff. So it subsidizes Tongkrum Hospital, the 24 hours sexual preference support hotline. Because Tongkrum Hospital is the biggest charity in Hong Kong, that it proactively provides such kind of services to support sexual minorities, which is served as a role model to others, social, well, social welfare organizations. How, when the secretary come to encourage more... wealth, social welfare organizations, however, the secretary come to encourage more to adopt the eliminated discrimination on the employment of sexual discrimination organization. I don't see any social welfare organization adopting the code of practice, not one of these event organization willing to adopt the code of practice. I hope that the CMAB could work harder on the promotion. And to actively pursuing this strategy pursued by the advisory group, the elimination of sexual discrimination, however, this group is concluded in twenty fifteen. So you're actively a follow-up on the recommendations, and I don't see much going forward. I think that we're most concerned that what's the next step for the legislating for the against sexual discrimination organization? So we're talking about, like, back then it was beginning of twenty sixteen. Former secretary, Cham Chi Yun, when he was your seat, he said to me that whether to legislate or not, he was first have to could do a study on the other jurisdiction. Well, you have, I told him, we need to set a time limit. He's replied to me that it will be the end of the year, which is end of twenty seventeen. May I ask the secretary, what is the progress? Is there any timeline undertaking? And for CMAB O O three on equal opportunities commission. That the EOC, I hope that secretary to take note, when it comes to the constitutional affairs panel to update this work, it's more like a public trial in which the internal processes are chaotic. I hope that the CMAB to pay attention, I know that after you assume office, you're busy at the EOC. However, you should do it more than the symbolic way. From asking the government, can you let the EOC to purchase their own premises? Because the city plaza too expensive now to move to Wong Chuk Hang, it might too expensive, then we have to move to Tung Shui Wei. It's just a joke, it's good to have his own premises, so they don't have to dig up into reserves, so that more money should put into his work. And secretary. Thank you for Mr. Raishan's question. For the Chongqing Hospital, that the support hotline for sexual minorities, I myself, beside this telephone hotline, they also have some support courses to follow up the relevant work. The second, on this strategy and recommendations proposed by the advisory group actually show results. For example, probably education and publicity, we see some promotion projects come out. For the code of practice of eliminating sexual discrimination in the workplace, we have promoted to the private and the public sector, including some small and medium enterprises. As for the social welfare organization and support organization will take note. As for the last question, as for the the legislative administrative measures taken by other jurisdiction on eliminating sexual discrimination is underway. Hopefully, we can count with some findings within this year. Ms. Chan Yeh Chan.
I have a two-part question. I might not have enough time. I will take the first question first. I see that the secretary's speech for the twenty eighteen voter registration, so part one and part two, as well with promoting basic law. I see something interesting. Isn't for response to Mr. Chong Ma Feng, CMAB O eighteen. In the past, is me talk about teaching basic law, talk about the provisions in the basic law, talk about one country, two system. As for paragraph seven, I see something quite peculiar. And let the government let they have a common comprehensive and standing of the basic law. So you have to have to let the public familiar with the constitution new order, that this is no constitution without with this law institution, that the interpretation of basic law rely on the constitution. And we never see this kind of wording before. Chairman. And when he accept the appointment on my press conferences, I mentioned that we act according with the basic law and the PRC constitution to fulfill one country, two system and high degree of autonomy. And in the past, in the budget, there had been funding earmarked to promote basic law. And in the course of promotion of basic law, when you mentioned HKSR, the institution in place, one country, two system, high degree of autonomy. Of course, you will mention that how this HKSR came about and what is the legal rationale? And also get into the constitution mentioning about to form a SR in according with the S C F C standing committee. Formation, this all quite natural, this why in my speech and in my line of work, also mentioned the institution and the basic law. This is not what the constitution said. Of course, the basic law speaks law, we all know how it came about. However, basically, it's the mini constitution of the Hong Kong, this is not the constitution of China. You can't remember that Hong Kong have judicial independence, and now the colocation has proven that the government has forced the Hong Kong people to attend a full rule and carry, Chief Secretary come to the CE question, time talk about the constitution new order. So we have to teach the legislature members what is the constitution new order. And the constitution quite clear that the basic law put the major principles have been enshrined, which included like the member said about the judicial jurisdiction and as well the high degree of autonomy. At the same time, basically also mentioned that the basic law is an alien part of the PRC. And the, the establishment of the SRG, in which their founding basis rests upon the constitution, which is quite a clear fact. When is this new, or when is this constitution order become a new one? Look, it's have since the formation of the SRG, Chief Secretary claimed different way, he claimed that is a a new constitution order, so it doesn't mean after Mr. Tang Shiping assumed that become the president. When we come to promote the basic law, we hope that the all sectors of the society to understand that we have a one country, two system, high degree of autonomy, and the legal basis of the information, establishment of the SRG is granted by the provisions of the basic law. Mr. Jeremy Tam, forty minutes. In the secretary's speech, he mentioned that the EOC is currently for the enforcement of the four discrimination ordinance. As for the potential discrimination ordinance, for example, the age discrimination. I would like to know about the progress for the legislation, as I recall, is like about two years ago, back then, the EOC have done some study on age discrimination. As we all know that Hong Kong has aging society and the government themselves about what, talk about raising the retirement age, as well the constitution access are raising the retirement age. To tie in with all this, for the legislation on age discrimination, do you have any progress?
Thank you, Mr. Tam, for your question. On anti-discrimination work, as I said, in relation to this discrimination law review, we have nine priorities. We would like to propose amendments soon within this year. As for other recommendations, that we haven't got plans to work with, to deal with other forms of discrimination. As for the work of the EOC, is there any EOC representative here? No, I don't think so, not today. Okay, you, of course, you need to review and amend the existing pieces of legislation. But from York Charles Day, I had meeting with him then, I asked about age discrimination legislation and progress, and he was positive at the time, he said he would look into that. And they would, he said they would do, conduct studies. I understand, actually, the EOC did carry out a relevant study. It's been so many years since. Do you still have plans to legislate on that front? Please be more specific. Actually, it's disappointing. It was in York Charles Day, so that this was mentioned, but you still give a reply like this, does it mean you have actually no intention to legislate against age discrimination? Now, in our priorities, first, we will work on the nine recommendations. Hopefully, we could submit a bill within this year. As for age discrimination, we don't have plans at the moment to proceed with legislative exercise. So you have no plans? Yes, at the moment, we have no plans. But of course, we will review the situation in this respect, and we could also liaise with Mr. Tam further to see what needs to be addressed. So you are saying you just work on the nine prioritized recommendations on the four existing pieces of discrimination legislation? So even if it's just not Asia for other forms of discrimination, you have no plans at all to legislate? Well, on legislative work for on discrimination, we will focus on the four existing ordinances. Because recommendations have been proposed, and there are nine prioritized recommendations which we'll work on first. As for other forms of discrimination, such as age discrimination, what we need to consider, what needs to be addressed, that's a separate issue. But in terms of our legislative plan, we have no plan for other discrimination ordinances. You mean you don't even have plans, you won't even consider other forms of discrimination and legislating for them? Well, it's for the EOC to promote such a work. Dr. Fernando Jung, well, this is very disappointing. The EOC conducted a study some years ago. Or the EOC put forward over seventy recommendations under the discrimination law review. Twenty-one were given priority, but you only picked nine. And you only work on things like breastfeeding. But for more fundamental changes on the, say, race discrimination ordinance or to include some concepts on disability discrimination ordinance, you won't deal with such fundamental changes. And then age discrimination legislation mentioned by Mr. Chairman Tam just now, you're not going to move forward on that, this is very disappointing, because the EOC has already got a report. So my questions are still on the EOC. CMAB O one three. I asked a lot about the legal services of the EOC. Now, for cases seeking legal assistance after conciliation, the EOC dealt with a few dozen cases in a year. But very few cases actually reached the court. Just a few cases, one to two or three cases at most. The legal service division of the EOC has eight lawyers, that includes the director and five senior legal officers and two legal officers. Now, the EOC is a law enforcement agency. If the EOC could not address possible discrimination through conciliation, the matter could be taken to court. So we are very much concerned about the efficiency of the EOC. We are paying over ten million dollars in emoluments for team, an existing legal team plus breathing out, but very few cases actually reached the court. And there are still just a dozen of cases of settlements without going to court, so that's all. So does the government encourage the EOC to enhance its efficiency? Now, if presidents could be sat through court cases, that may send a message to the community, so people will not discriminate against others, wouldn't that be a better way? So could you do more? Secretary. On this issue, I understand the relevant panel or somebody this was discussed. On complaints, cancellation legal service, I understand you see is during a review, will closely monitor the works and see if they could effectively meet the demands of complainants. Well, actually, last time I moved the motion, I asked for a timetable. Now, you say the EOC is going to do a, an internal review, when will it be completed and when will report be submitted to us? Yes, after the motion, the government will give a response. Can I please also follow up on a point quickly? Now, you say you're going to work with the two guide doc associations, the food and environment, food and health bureau and so on, you're having discussions them. I understand for many modes of public transport, if they are to allow guide docs under training on board, there is a legal obstacle. So when are you going to amend the relevant legislation? Oh, yes, members asked about that at the relevant panel meeting. We're working actively, proactively on that together with the Labor Welfare Bureau, H Bureau and other bureau. We're also discussing with relevant associations, here we're talking about guide docs under training. And we find that in many pieces of legislation in Hong Kong, they're all relevant. So if we need to amend a relevant legislation that involves some huge exercise, and so we are now working on that. Do you have a timetable? We're actively following up on the matter. And we see there are many issues involved here, but we hope to get this done as soon as possible. So we are actively working on it. Next, Mrs. Regina, you please.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't put any written questions to to the bureau, but I have a new, brand new question on resources allocation, can I raise that now? Yes, please. Last Sunday, there was some think time that stay say seminar on national security. The chief executive said it's our constitutional duty to legislate for national security. So have you set aside resources for more public education efforts? Secretary.
Under the CMAB, we don't have corresponding resources for this. What you mentioned, I believe, is under national security. On the promotion of basic law, we have the resources. And that's, well, I hope you're saying that just because it involves the national security, so you just leave it to the security bureau? Because it is a matter of constitutional duty. Now, when you promote the basic law, you have to mention obligations as well as rights. So you need to also set aside some resources, you should work together with the security bureau. Have you considered how you're going to set aside resources, even if you don't do it on your own, you need to think about it. Now, on resources allocation, in the coming year, we have seventeen million dollars for promoting the basic law. On how we could effectively promote basic law and what the focus should be, well, we are more than happy to discuss with other bureau. Because this is part of basic law education, so you have over ten million dollars, I hope you will set aside some resources for that. Otherwise, how do you create the, an enabling environment? Because everyone is scared as soon as they hear it, no one wants to deal with it. Every official says, no, it's not for me to do with it, then it can never get done.
Mr. Michael All. I'd like to follow up on CMAB O fifty, O five one. Now, the secretary said seventeen million dollars we set aside for promoting the basic law. Of course, it is the duty of the government to promote the basic law. In the past, you have put in much resources and effort.
In the past, you have put in much resources and effort. But still, when it comes to public understanding about the basic law, it is insufficient. We can all see that for ourselves. So my question is, as you planned promotional and educational activities for basic law, did you take a targeted approach? Or did you do any assessment on the effectiveness? If so, what was your assessment? If you haven't done any assessment, how come you didn't do it? Another question is whether there is an effective measure on the seventeen billion dollars you use to make sure that it's used properly, suitably for the promotion of basic law? Secretary.
This year, we have seventeen million dollars to promote the basic law. That's actually five times more than a few years back. So we are putting in more resources. That's the first point. Secondly, as we promote the basic law, there is actually a steering committee in the government to coordinate the efforts. We also target different groups. For example, young people, schools, businesses, community, local communities and so on. And apart from the government, we go through committee organizations, N G Os, to help with promotion. In fact, many N G Os are helping with promotion. Either they do research or they disseminate information or they organize activities. On measuring the effectiveness of the promotional effort, it depends on the types of the activities. And then we can look at the participation rate and that gives a good gauge. And so we do conduct review from time to time. Say, if we have, say, a game or quiz, and we'll see how many have taken part. That serves as an indicator. But what is important is that the target groups we have in mind and what promotional models we use. While we've heard this same reply many times, could you please give us something in writing to tell us how you assess each types of activities? And if there is not enough participation or so on, then what solutions do you have? Can you also consider tapping further into community resources to promote the basic law? Please provide all this information writing, please. Yes, as I said, I, we have given information on past promotional efforts. And the relevant panel discussed the scheme. And we also have a committee. And then they will consider for the following year what the focus should be and what are their more effective means and so on. And we are more than happy to listen to suggestions. Can you tell us what new way you have to use the seventeen million dollars for promoting the basic law in the coming year? Now, for the seventeen million dollars earmarked, we will provide additional support to groups carrying out the promotion. That should yield a concrete effect. One oh seven, C M A B one oh seven and one twenty. Now, on the voters register and the number on it, I see each year there's an increase of at least ten thousand voters. Kun Tong, Tin Moon, Yun Long, Sha Tin. From twenty fifteen to seventeen, in each year, there was close to ten thousand additional voters. And the, on the register, voter register, there are now three point eight million voters. So very soon, we could reach the figure of four million. But there have been much criticisms about the accuracy or even truthfulness of the register. In C M A B, is... Now, we asked about whether there's any vetting process, say, involving at least a million voters in an election year. In C M A B one two O, for example, in twenty seventeen, the, you have a vetting cycle, but it covers just about one hundred and forty thousand registered voters. So just four percent of the whole register. And so it seems that the vetting only covers about less than four percent of the voters. Twenty eighteen, there will be more elections by elections and twenty nineteen district council election and also electoral election very soon. So that means we have an election every year. So there's no such a thing as an election year anymore. Every year is an election year. That's a new change. And then at the beginning of twenty eighteen, when you register voters, you will also require address proof. That's a new element. So you are going to require, now you require address proof. So you are going to enhance the accuracy of the voters' register? In that case, would you still adopt the past practice to make a distinction between the election year and on the election year? Would you still just include a sample of one hundred and forty thousand, would you check on more voters? Because the relevant legislation should pass starting from this year. Address proof will be required for registering as voters. So what are you going to do in the coming year in terms of resources and so on?
As for the voter registration work, where a lot of work need to be done, is a resource allocation and efficiency. So in terms of arrangement, for new measures in place for the existing registered voter, you need to change the address, they need to submit address proof. That's a new measure. We have worked harder on. So when it comes to the general elections, in terms of the sampling, there will be a higher proportion of sampling because there will be election year. In ordinary times, there will be a lower sampling percentage. It's about resource allocation and focus. Mr. Holden Chow. I'd like to ask originally by C M A B O fifty one on the supplementary to the response by administration. Of course, we know that we need to put more resources to promote public understanding to one country, two system, to country constitution and the basic law understanding. So can the bureau tell us that in the past or whether in the future, how you deal with, since we need to promote basic law, the constitution, one country, two system, in promoting this, for the organization promoting these concepts to the personnel, how to let, make sure they have a correct understanding themselves? So maybe you can provide some training support so that they can go on to promote it to the public on the correct understanding of basic law, the constitution and one country system. I wonder can the bureau explain to us? Secretary. And the promotion of basic law, like I said just now, we need to have the relevant corresponding resources. So for this financial year, that our budget is seventeen million dollars. And the funding compared to two thousand four and five, there's a more than fivefold increase. So the bidding is only three million. So we have more resources allocated. So the promotion of basic law, besides being done by the government, the civil society, the N G Os, that how do you work together to promote this? So we need to consider how to enhance the communication coordination. So we have as a subsidy scheme to help them. And to promoting basic law, so content is also important. So also have the, provide the relevant material that we need to work on. For example, we have a basic law database that for the case laws, so that we can, for the easy, the basic law court database, case database, for better grasp, however, we have to put it in a layman's language. As for targeting different groups, they require a different kind of work. For at the district level, we have different activities that can be helped to understand basic law. For the commerce and the business sector, we also have a working group to design promotion activities. So overall speaking, besides territory wide activities, what should rely on the electronic media? For example, as website updates and thinking about more accessible means to do this kind of work. So we're all working towards this direction. For the conventional strategy, exhibition or easy understood ways such as games is, are also some of the means. So we are gathering the strength of all sides to work towards this goal. But first, we need to have the resources and followed by the dissemination information by all sectors in the easy to approachable ways in reaching their respective groups. Chairman, of course, the secretary have been quite exhaustive in explanation. I may leave a comment. Hopefully, when promoting the basic law and for those of assisting the organization and personnel, you have sufficient training for them in. And you can understand when promoting the basic law, some of the basic concepts must be laid down clearly. For example, the formation of the S A R G in accordance with the P R C Constitution, Article thirty one. So so this kind of basic concept must be expanded. Otherwise, a lot of people not aware of them. Next, Mr. Ma Feng Guo. I want to follow up on the question, C M A B O seventy one. On the art groups in mainland, the government mentioned it helped a lot of art groups. For example, the Chinese Orchestra, C C D C, Hong Kong Dance Company. How would you mention about small to medium sized art groups? How the government get in touch with the small and medium art groups? If they were interested into do exchange in mainland, what kind of support can be offered? We have small and medium cultural organizations, plenty of number. They do need support, while the bigger ones have stronger administrative support. And the response also mentioned, since twenty sixteen, that the Beijing office have set up the cultural exchange controller and wish to take forward the culture exchange work. And didn't talk about how it will be carried in other mainland offices. And for the, we have this Bay Area program for the Guangzhou office. So what kind of role does it play in the Bay Area development? For the cultural exchange office in the Beijing, Beijing E T cultural office, we can use it replicated in the Guangzhou office to coordinate the work in the Bay Area. Because for the cultural exchange, important to promote them. Would you consider that having this kind of a role in the Guangzhou E T O, E T C O? So who respond first and then followed by the Guang, Guang, E T O described the cultural organization in China. The Bay Area, one aspect will be the culture exchange. In different cities and Hong Kong itself, for a lot of culture activities coming up and plenty of art groups. So would you have a lot of room to leverage our strength and let our art groups to develop? As for the mainland offices, for the personnel related to the culture exchange, I think it will be on the increase as well. Miss Wu. Besides helping the big cultural organization, the smart art groups also rely on the coordination for the mainland offices. I can confirm that we welcome them coming. If there any performances or maybe when they at early stage are looking for venues, they're welcome to come to us. Because the, we have a Beijing office, we have the the head of culture exchange. So also help of different cultural performances. And an innovative stage play is being played in China, in Beijing. So the West Kowloon Theater and playing the Baowang Bi Jie Ji. So after have success to run in the Black Swan Theater in Beijing. So it was, I'd like to perform elsewhere in China that we can help out. That's my brief response. For the second part of my question, for the Bay Area. Yes, for the Bay Area, on the cultural exchange, also how do we help the art groups to develop for a greater room for development? That we will look into. Mr. K K Kuak. A question and one sixty four. The Amnesty Hong Kong had a review issues. Said, and after the umbrella movement, the Hong Kong Human Rights Index have fall five, five years in a row. And they last January thirty first, that for the global democracy ranking was seventy one, flawed democracy. We along the rare lakes of Paraguay, Namibia. And for the brainwashing education going to nations of all the money spent and the government have spared no expenses. And the basically claim that we need to achieve democracy. How would have you done in the past? What will be coming, what can do in the coming year? So that we can stop being so embarrassing. So we're number seventy one in democracy ranking. Compared to the mainland, we're still doing better deal or one thirty nine for within dictatorship. So what is your future direction? Are we coming towards dictatorship? I don't think we're close because every day there have been talks about legislative article twenty-three and change to suppress freedom of speech and academic freedom. Do we have to fall away from seventy one to one thirty eight? Or do we have to adhere to the basic law to return Hong Kong to a high degree of autonomy, one country, two system and the democratic institution? Can, C M A B had a role to play? And the secretary, do you have any role to play in the coming year? What are you going to do and how much funding can be allocated? So if we fill the one country, two system and one can, and high degree of autonomy, I'm sure that the ambit of the C M A B in fulfilling high degree of autonomy and how the people administering Hong Kong, of course, would be inherent the basic law and the P R C constitution. According to our law and our judicial independent full jurisdiction, we are, our different, all liberties protected and the law that is been made clear. As for the constitution development, the human I refer to the gradual in the, the basic law that require all sides to reach a consensus and a consent from all three sides before proceeding. So the government is the most sincere in taking forward this area work. In the past, we've been working very hard to communicate with all sides. Well, I don't have much time. And Chairman, let me ask the question. My question has been cleared. As the secretary, don't you have some responsibility? And what are your object goals? So for the expenses, what do you plan to do? And now we all for specific things. So what specifically you're going to do so that we can make Hong Kong more democratic? Chairman, as for the areas, I outlined. Um, and there are funding for different projects for the C M A B. And I'm promoting basic, I'm asking about democracy. We also have a different funding. You're not answering my question. The secretary, in accordance with basic always, I was have a democratic. Um institution for the constitution development, the relevant election management, we also have a funding and a mechanism in place to take it forward. When the constitutional reform, there will be discussed many times and its position has been made clear. Mister Au Lo Hing, C M A B one one two. So in answering for Mister Dennis Quark, I'll be an nominating committee to deal with the twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen electoral elections. Uh they deal with the eligibility of the candidates, also mentioned about a twenty eighteen by election. The nominating committee also deal with the of the landscape and architectural sector, but none other functional constituency. So mean there for the geographical constituencies and eligibility of the candidates. They only solely decided by the returning officer or uh only consult others, but without going through the nomination committee.
For the nominations advisory committees, uh its functions under the law, I will ask my colleague to answer. For the nominations advisory committees, the um terms of reference is uh provided for in the law. Now, if the returning officer. Needs to uh vi- uh seek consult the nominations advisory committees on the eligibility of a candidate, the returning officer may do so. Uh for the twenty eighteen electoral election cases, Mister Au Not Kim referred to a number of cases that were rightly reported. From um information in the public, the way we learn is a question of whether. An individual candidate is in line with uh. Section forty one B of the relevant electoral legislation. That is, the candidate must um sign a statement pledging allegiance to the basic law and the uh uh Hong Kong S A R. And. For uh section forty of the electoral elections ordinance, uh the. N A C does not have power to determine whether candidate is eligible. Now, if you have uh read section seventeen of the Electoral Affairs Commission ordinance, uh it says that it must um take note. It must, it's not it may, it must um refer to the views of the nominations advisory committees in deciding whether a candidate is eligible. Now, if the committee has such a power and and uh if the returning officer sees the need to consult the N A C. Of course, if he has consulted the N A C, of course, he has to give regard to the views of the M A C. But what I said just now is that the legislation states clearly, uh the terms of reference of the N A C does not include um consideration of whether a candidate is eligible. Well, in that case, it's dangerous. If there's a need, the returning officer may consult the committee. Or if there's no need, it doesn't need, he doesn't need to do so. In that case, why? They set up a nominations advisory committee, then might as well scrap it altogether. So because the return office may not have to consult the committee, then it's dangerous. Now, I saw the whole piece of legislation. It says that uh the final decision should rest with the nominations advisory committee. But now you with such discretion, that means the final decision rests with the returning officer. I believe Mister Au's interpretation of the electoral election ordinance is wrong. No, you are wrong. Read section seventeen. It says here there must be regard to. Why is it not must? On the terms of reference of the nominations advisory committee, there is specific provision in the law. It stated specifically in the legislation that in section forty bracket one B of the Legislative Council ordinance. The election ordinance and then the N A C needs not be consulted. Mister Lang Yuchong.
Well, I'm disappointed with the administration's reply on age discrimination, because we didn't just talk about it recently. It was discussed before at the E O C. It was all the discussion, even in this council, we've talked about it for many, many years. When Matthew Jones was the Secretary for Labor and Welfare, I kept raising the issue of age discrimination. Uh which is really serious for job seekers. We always say there is short uh floor of manpower, we cannot keep up with the economic development. But there are actually many elderly persons. Well, yes, of course, there are elderly persons who are not fit enough to work, we should support them. But then there are others who really want to work, but they can't work because no one would hire them. Matthew Jones said before, she looked forward to um legislation for age discrimination. He mentioned it in this council too, but how come today you say you have no plans for that now? Now, we need to look at the needs of this uh community. But I I also you have gone back on the promise made by an official before. Now, you have no plans to legislate against age discrimination, but um to promote economic development, which consider reconsider. There should at least be legislation for age discrimination involving job seekers. Or is it a case that the U C doesn't have enough manpower to do, or 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 is it a case that you don't have enough manpower to do with the nine prioritized recommendations? If that's the case, we should consider giving the E O C more money so they could um have more money and more people. Secretary?
Thank you. There are two aspects. On the existing, for existing pieces of legislation on age, on discrimination, the A C. Uh is tasked with um implementing this ordinances, it's got plan to um amend um the relevant legislation. To implement the nine recommendations and the E O C is working for them on that. Uh other than the nine recommendations, there are other recommendations as well, they will be looked at in future. So we do have a concrete plan to implement all the uh to implement the recommendations. Uh the other question is about age discrimination. There are uh um senior members of the community who have the experience, who have the capacity to work. Uh they encounter difficulties finding work, so how do we overcome those difficulties? And what measures can we take? Well, we we could explore them. In fact, we need to explore them. So do we do it through legislative means or there are other alternatives? Or there's something we can we can we'll consider. In reply to Mister, to the earlier question, I just mentioned, pointed out that um within the uh scope, the work plan of this bureau. We have set priorities. Uh we would like to first legislate for the nine prioritized recommendations first. Yes, that's the case, but you know, um um there's always been a controversy on whether we should import labor. But then there are people who are more advanced in age, but they have the experience. But it's exactly because of the age they cannot find work. Isn't that a waste of resources? Do you not think this is important? Here we're talking about economic development. So I'll finish up and that's all for me. So is it a case that there are not sufficient manpower resources? If so, can you give them more money? So they could um carry a study and explore the possibility. Secretary?
Yes, I appreciate Mister Lang's question about age discrimination and employment of older people. Well, one way is to extend the retirement age. Are there other ways? So well, I'm sure the relevant bureau uh will see what can be done. Now, we are, I'm glad to discuss this issue, but in terms of our work priorities, uh we would like to keep to what I have mentioned earlier. Well, let's end the session as a five fifty. Last two, Miss Cloudy Mo and Miss Tanya Chan. Miss Cloudy Mo, four minutes, please.
Well, it's just out of curiosity, O five one. Basic law promotion. We all know the basic law derives its powers from the Chinese constitution. And the basic law is stated clearly that we have judicial independence. At the same time, there is, the N P C S C has the power to interpret the basic law. Now, when I was a journalist, uh when I was doing coverage on this, the I used the title. That is, the um N P C's power overrides the basic law, and that's a fact. But now Beijing likes to say this all the time, that is to exercise full jurisdiction over Hong Kong. So. Would you say clearly that the Chinese constitution overrides the um basic law? As you promote the basic law, uh this is the so-called new constitutional order.
Well, Chairman, we've uh always said this, uh we need to trace the origin of the establishment of the Hong Kong S A R. It's based on the Chinese um constitution that the S A R is set up and then then we can have one country, two systems. So it is important when we consider the basic law that we have to bear in mind that Hong Kong is an inalienable part of the of China. And we have to explain what our constitutional setup is and where we derive our powers from. This is important that we have a correct understanding, and so that's what we try to do. No follow up. Miss Tanya Chan, thank you.
I put in a question myself. C M A B one O nine. Uh it is, uh it turns out to be the same question as Mister Au Not Hens. I asked a detailed question, but um the administration thought I was a fool, they didn't even answer my question. Well, for part, my question two, uh they gave some brief information. Question three, I see something interesting here, which is about the nominations advisory committee. I don't know if there's need to declare interest. Uh Mister Wong Cheng Yu. Was my mentor. Or I was his pupil rather. Now, for um. The Legislative Council Regulation, section seventeen, as Mister Au Not Kim mentioned. The view must be considered, but then in your reply, you say that the returning officer may seek the advice of the nominations advisory committee. As to whether a candidate is eligible or should be disqualified. So if I could um find out more from Mister Tang. I'm looking at cap one four five, uh five four one C. So where does it say that the um nominations advisory committee, N A C? Would not give advice uh in relation to section forty bracket one bracket B. Of the Legislative Council Regulation. I don't have the um legislation at hand. We'll go go online now, go online. But I am quite sure that um. For cap four four one C Electoral Affairs Commission nominations advisory committees Legislative Council Regulation, there is a specific clause that says. That the terms of reference of the nominations advisory committees does not. Uh include matters under section forty and thirty four of the relevant Legislative Council election legislation. Well, I I could provide information in writing. Uh last week, um at the Eastern District, the council, there was a similar question and we have um laid out our reply in detail. Now, to say, uh you you mentioned that must have regard to. Now, is if the R O seeks advice of N A C, then of course, then N A C's advice must be given during guard. So you mean if they don't, if the I R O does not ask, there's no need to have regard? So um on what basis would the R O decide whether to seek the advice of the N A C? Is it um when he gets a calling or what? Are there criteria to go by?
Now, on the eligibility of a candidate, uh in under section thirty seven of the electoral election legislation. It stated clearly the eligibility of a candidate. If the R O C uh has quest doubts, he may, he may uh seek the advice of the N A C. But then in cap five four one C. The uh sections forty is excluded from the terms of reference of N A C. So therefore, the N A C does not have the uh powers to judge. On whether a candidate would pledge allegiance or pledges allegiance to the basic law and the S A R. So because that's the case, therefore, the R O may not even seek advice from the N A C because the N A C doesn't have this powers under its terms of reference. So it's not a matter of whether the R O wishes to ask or not ask the question, it's not a matter of which. So I, oh, I think you, I know what you're talking about is the uh interpretation section, right? The the I will come back. Thank you. So there are four more minutes. Mister Au Not Him, please.
Well, I didn't have a chance, but um now I got a chance, so can I ask again? Now, say the N A C, the nomination advisory committee never held a meeting. Let's take the case of Anna Chao. She was this, she was not allowed to send in election. What process did you go through? Why did you have to go through the Department of Justice? Can you walk us through the whole process again? Well, all we could say is that it's for the returning officer to determine whether a candidate is eligible. And he will or she will go by the relevant legislative requirements. No, you're not really answering my question, but I won't comment on the the individual cases. Well, please um get this principle right. This series of meetings about on the expenditure of government, but if you touch upon policy, fine, but. Yeah, of course, it's relevant because um. I have questions about the setting of the N A Cs under the legislation. There's no mention of the existence of N A Cs, and now you tell us, actually, they do exist. And then they actually vetted the um candidate's eligibility for the architectural. Function and serving function constituency, but how come not for other uh candidates? Well, you your question should be about how Mr. Government spends so much, why they spend it here and not there. It's not for you to uh just ask any questions. But no, please allow him a chance to speak. I think he wants to answer the question. No, we have to get the principle clear, so I hope members will will appreciate that. Secretary?
Well, in my and the permanent secretary's reply. We just refer to the nomination advisory committees, which do exist. Um, we, there is a clear provision on the terms of reference of the N A Cs. Now, the legislation all states clearly how the R O should consider whether a candidate is eligible. So uh we go by the legal requirements, therefore. With our differences here, we believe sec- in section seventeen, it says that the R O must consult. But then the permanent secretary say that the R O may consult if necessary, if we consider it's necessary, but there's a huge difference there. Now, let me explain again. The N A C has its own term of reference. If it's within the terms of reference of the N A C, the R O may ask the N A C. To give their views on matters within their terms of reference. Now, if the N A C has given them advice on matters within the terms of reference, well, yes, okay, you've answered my question. Let me ask you about two scenarios. In one scenario. Uh it's possible that the N A C may give advice on a candidate. So does, is the N A C superior to the R O or vice versa? A second question, you said the N A Cs have not held any meetings in response to Mister Dennis Quark's question. You said N A Cs have not held meetings, so uh without any meeting, what process did the R O go through?
Permanent Secretary, on part one of the question. Honestly, I do not have the legislation at hand. My recollection is that um in the case of a by-election, the N A C. Now, or rather, the R O may. Seek advice from the N A C. It is necessary, but that's does not include section forty because it's not covered.
But if it's um ordinary le- election, the N A C may have no powers to give advice to the R O. I don't know why, that that's how the law was designed. Uh I don't, I don't know why it was like this before nineteen ninety, but I but I I think for the law governing the elections of the electoral. There's no loophole. But anyway, um for ordinary election and by-election, the uh rights of the candidates are different. That's in the law. Okay, the next session will start at six oh five.